If, uh, I guess we could do a roll call perhaps? That would be great. Whenever you're ready. Oh, she is?
She is here.
Okay. Okay, just a minute, okay? Thanks. Welcome to the closed session for this evening. Could I please get a roll call?
Mayor Chair Bettencourt?
Here.
Miracle Tim, Vice Chair Alakon?
Here.
Council members, commissioners, Bishop? Loa?
Here.
And Olsen?
Here.
And Commissioners Frankasane?
Here.
And Denny?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Bishop.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Do we want to do public comments first or the presentation from the city attorney? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do public comments on closed session items only. Is there anyone online for public comments?
Yes. Jason Dick, feel free to unmute yourself.
Yes, City Council. Uh, I see that J.J. Murphy is not on the agenda anymore in closed session. And I was just wondering, uh, when we're gonna find out how much the city paid him off? And/or if we did, and how much attorney fees are? I'd like that information. Also, I'd like a full report of exactly what happened. And, uh, so the people know how their money was spent and why it was spent. And who was, uh, caused it, caused the chaos? And who's responsible for the payout, if there is one. Uh, also, uh, I was just wondering if Megan Taggart, the planning director, has been reprimanded and apologized to Dr. Mock and James Valdez for her misspeaking to the, uh, Planning Commission Board on their project and costing them the rezone and financial hardship. Also, when it comes to, uh, the attorney and his compensation and his review, how could you put employees on six months administrative leave, paid administrative leave, when all the facts were known about the case and could have been settled long ago? So I want you to take that under consideration when you do his review and his compensation. On City Manager Rhonda Perez, I feel that she had, that, uh, her compensation to go up to a higher amount is not justified at this time. She left $1.5 million of Measure J County funds on the table that we should have received, just based on per capita. We have a higher foster care population, a higher need than the rest of the county. So we should have actually got around $3 million. Why is it, why does it take somebody who wants to help the city and get grants, like Derek Speedy? He wanted just to see the studio. He wanted somebody from the city to go over and open up the door of the studio so he could write grants for the city. And he couldn't get nobody. And it's right down the street. The other thing is, I just don't feel she commands that high amount of money. She hasn't done anything that's really spectacular for the city compared to J.J. Murphy. And so, I want you to consider that. I don't think it's time. I think she has a lot more to do to display, uh, her talents. I mean, let's think about it. All the grass at the parks were dead. Our kids were playing on dead grass, dirt. Dad, go.
Thank you, Jason. And do we have any other speakers?
No more at this time.
Anybody in the audience to speak on closed session items only? All right, I'll make a move to closed public comments. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, now if we could please have a presentation by the city attorney?
So, uh, you'll notice that there are five items listed on the closed session. We will be discussing those matters on, um, item 4.1. Councilmember Alakon will be recusing, um, due to a potential conflict of interest. And then, um, I will point out, just for the record, in 4.3, that the city's representative is me. And then, as far as item 4.5, that Rhonda Perez is the city's representative in that matter. And we can go to closed session at this time.
Okay, let's go ahead and step in the back. Thank you.
Okay, we're done with closed session. I'm gonna let the city attorney make a presentation.
So, um, two of the items, uh, four point one and four point two were discussed. Uh, there was no reportable action. I will indicate that the other items still are are under discussion. So after, so after the open session, the city council will return back to closed session. So you can see if there is a report out at that time, if there was any action taken or not.
We're gonna go ahead and adjourn, uh, adjourn the closed session meeting and we're gonna begin our regular, uh, city council meeting. If you will all please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Please place, face the flag with your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right. So could I ask for a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances? Some second. Okay. Are we gonna be doing computer votes or?
No.
Not today? Okay, great. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the motion carries. And we will move on to item number nine, public comments on consent calendar items only. Do we have any one online?
None at this time.
Okay, great. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on consent calendar items only?
We have Jason Zink.
Oh, hi Jason. I didn't even see you sitting there.
Good evening, council. Uh, my thing is regarding the Joshua trees. There were a lot of Joshua trees on this particular property. Uh, and a lot of properties, and we still do not have a city Joshua tree mitigation plan. That is, uh, that is pro-growth, but preserves the Joshua trees. As you know, the Joshua tree is kind of the symbol of Palmdale and what settlers thought were palm trees. So why can't we sit down a committee, citizens committee? I know there's many other people, uh, that would like to do this and sit down and put a Joshua tree mitigation plan together that benefits not only the Joshua trees, not only our city's, uh, uniqueness, but also is pro-development. So everybody has a plan and we can move things forward. Not, never have something like the Amazon project ever again, where everything was done, you know. Uh, it should have been more transparent and it should have been a mitigation plan. Uh, the other thing is what we need in this city is a city, uh, preserve. We go and spend ten million dollars buying some land and then we sell credits to that preserve, just like the state does with air credits. So you, you wanna develop? Okay, this is the, uh, this is the impact your city, or you're causing on the, uh, desert habitat. And then they can buy credits from the city and it preserves the property and reimburses the city for preserving the land. And this is like the, uh, Beryl Springs Road that you and me cleaned up, the trash and stuff. That's the area I'm talking about. Una Lake, uh, around Pa- uh, Palmdale Lake and a few other places, uh, unique. Uh, also have a plan where we put Joshua trees, uh, where we know where we wanna put them, in parks, along roads and everything. So when it comes time for a Joshua tree to be moved, we know there's, hey, there's a place here, here in the city, here in the city, here in the city. We can pick all these places and have a plan. And that's what I'd like to see from this council.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Do we have any other speakers?
No more public speaker cards for the consent calendar.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to close public comments.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion. Okay, I'll second the, uh, the move to approve a consent calendar. All in favor? Hi, anybody opposed? All right, so now we're gonna move on to public hearing number eleven? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So do you want me to read the introduction to the ordinance or?
Your preference, mayor.
Okay, I'll read. So eleven point one says introduction and adoption of ordinance number sixteen oh eight and ordinance of the city, uh, council of the city of Palmdale, amending Palmdale municipal code, section two point oh eight point oh three oh, providing for compensation for board, commission and committee members and limiting service to one board, commission or committee at a time. Should I keep reading or do I need to stop there? Okay, there's a lot more to it, so. All right.
Would you like the presentation, mayor?
Please, that'd be great. Uh, Rhonda, you could have done it from your seat, but that's okay. But thank you. Okay.
This is tall. Good evening, mayor.
It goes up and down.
I know. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem and council members. Before you this evening is consideration for introduction and adoption of ordinance number sixteen zero eight. At the September twenty, I'm sorry, the September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting, it was suggested by the public and commissioners, the council consider compensation for our commissions, committees and boards. After some analysis throughout the city, uh, various departments weighed in as well as the city attorney's office. Before you this evening is consideration to pay our commissioners, committee members, one hundred dollars per meeting for a max of two meetings per month, an additional fifty dollars for any chair. With this does come some implications that we wanna make sure that our committee and commission members understand. We did do an analysis of several other cities. The majority of those cities do not pay their commissioners, but we understand that, um, that this is something that the council would like to do, um, and that costs are rising. That's, that was the impetus for bringing this before you in, in the beginning. We will have to amend certain portions of our municipal code that say that these are volunteer positions. We will also have to amend bylaws for each of the groups that say that they are volunteer positions. There are two carve-outs for this, uh, provision. The audit committee cannot be compensated because that is obviously a conflict in and of itself. And secondly, as part of the public art commission's bylaws, it is stated that a planning commissioner must sit on that board. So that is the exception to the person spending, or, um, one individual being on more than one board at a time. Uh, with that, if you have any additional questions, I am happy to answer those. This, these people, these, uh, individuals will become essentially city staff members. They will have to pay into pars. They will also be subject to tax withholdings, AB twelve thirty-four ethics training, Form seven hundred filing, sexual harassment training, things of those nature.
And will they be background checked also, like other city employees?
Yes, they will. They will be fingerprinted and background checked.
So in the future, when we put applications out for the public, all of these items be listed of, of what the consequences are of joining that commissioner committee?
Correct.
Okay, great. And can you explain to me the significance of having somebody from the planning commission on the arts commission? Or do you wanna bifurcate those so that it's no longer a requirement?
Uh, the benefit of having one on the other is so that there is obviously some, um, some continuance of thought. And as we plan for the city and we have developers come in, we do have the public art fee and the requirement in lieu. So we wanna make sure that those two commissions are in sync with any development that takes place and future art that would be as a part of that development or elsewhere in the city if they take an in-lu option.
Okay. Anybody have questions?
And, and, and madam mayor, if, if I do, and then after that, then certainly if there's continued questions and then we'll wanna hear from the public. So, uh, in addition to what she had indicated, there are two, um, proposed revisions to the ordinance that is before you. The first would be to add a line at the end, so on page two of the ordinance, there's subsection H. It would be to add the following, um, it would state, and each member of any board, commission or committee may decline to receive all compensation.
Okay, yes. So I just, go ahead.
I was gonna hold that for our comments and here, after public comment.
We can talk about that after. So first we have to have staff read the ordinance number sixteen oh eight and resolution number CC twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight and, uh, CC.
So we've done that.
Okay, so now?
I had one other.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, there were two provisions. Uh, that was the first revision. And then the second revision, um, would be to add a new section two and then section three and four would be revised, um, the numbering anyway. So it would state the following, that the effective date, it says this ordinance shall become effective on the thirtieth day after its adoption, which is standard. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the revisions of subsection G of two point oh eight oh three oh of the municipal code shall not apply to the membership of the mobile home park rental review board until July first, twenty twenty-three. And the reason for that is we currently have one member who sits on two committees and they're just about to meet. And they would be meeting one time in February and we don't wish this to prevent him from being able to participate in that for the one meeting that they have per year.
Okay, so I haven't, this is the first I'm hearing of these revisions while we entertain public comment. If I could ask that we circulate sort of a red line amongst us all, cause you've read through that and I don't know.
Correct. I'm happy to do so. I have written copies here and they're available for the public as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, so I'm gonna move, uh, right now to open public testimony on this, this hearing item. If anybody, is there anybody on the phone? IT?
None at this time.
Okay, is there anybody in the chamber here that would like to speak on this item?
We have Phil Denny.
Oh, Phil? And then Jason, you'll be next.
Good evening. That was so nice, what Rhonda, the way she put it together. However, I'm gonna vehemently disagree. And here's my prediction, sixteen oh eight, you're gonna pass it tonight five to zero. I think it should be zero to five. I was here last September, uh, September seventh, when this was introduced. And at that time, it was different, um, different counsel by a few people. And, um, it was discussed for less than five minutes. And anyway, if you recall, uh, former now, former council member Juan Corillo. You guys went back and forth and, uh, and I remember, cause I just watched the video, uh, council member Corillo said, we should give them two fifty, not one hundred. We should show appreciation for what they do and for their time and their efforts. And some of these people work seven days a week. You may not know that, but seven days a week they work. And, uh, when, uh, when Juan Corillo said, let's give them two fifty. That's an appropriate amount for what they do. And when Juan said those words, I watched the video, Laura, you were shaking your head yes, that you agreed with what he said for the two fifty. Richard was doing the same thing. Um, Austin wanted more information at that time. So I think after you do the one hundred dollars, you need to do another one for two fifty. Cause when you take out the tax and all that, you end up with ninety-one dollars, not, not a hundred. And ninety-one dollars, it's not much. If you have a car or a truck and you notice your fuel gauge is on empty and you go to the cheapest place in town, which I think is Sam's Gas, uh, over by Planet Fitness, uh, on Ten Street West. And you fill your tank, it could, and not an exaggeration, this could easily be, uh, one twenty, hundred thirty dollars to fill your tank. So really, uh, I wish Juan was still here. But, uh, the two fifty is the appropriate amount. I understand you're gonna zip it five zero. Uh, but I think you need to unzip it zero five. You won't do that, but a hundred dollars is the start. But it needs to be two fifty. There's, in my mind, and I've spoken with some other commissioners, two fifty is the appropriate amount, not the one hundred.
Do we have any other speakers? Jason, come on up?
I have to, uh, kinda agree with Denny. And I do think it should be more money. I don't think nobody becomes a council member or a planning commissioner, uh, housing director or park committee, hopefully in the future, uh, to make money. But the fact of the matter is, some people need the money to serve, uh, just because of the economics of life. It's not like the old days, you know? Uh, and, uh, some people do struggle to serve, but they wanna sure, serve and they're passionate about serving, but because of economics, they can't. A hundred dollars is not enough for a planning commissioner or a housing director. Uh, you don't have to take it. You can always donate it to the Palmdale Foundation, City Foundation. You can donate it to a community group. They used, the Little Rock Creek Irrigation Board, used to, some members needed the money, but some members would donate it to the library or the Lions Club and, uh, 4H Club. So you can do that. It also helps motivate people to attend meetings. Uh, I also believe the mayor should get more than what, uh, they currently get. I was also, uh, wondering why there was no comps from Victor Valley on this, just comps from down there. Why wasn't there from Victorville or Sperry or, or anything like that? Uh, community members that serve on boards should get city cards. That gives them discounts to city events and, uh, free passes on some, some things at, of city, that the city sponsors. So my recommendation is to give, uh, more money than, uh, the hundred dollars, cause I don't think that's enough. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this item?
No more speaker cards on this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to close. No, I already asked online. Okay, so I'll make a motion to close public testimony on this item?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so we are closing public testimony. Now we can discuss it, correct?
Right.
So, all right.
If I could just ask if, I don't know if you wanna respond from, from up here or down there, but, um, if you could just, I think there were some valid points raised, but, um, I think initially in your presentation, you said that, that you had done some analysis of, of various other boards and commissions and the compensation rates, uh, for those appointments. If you could just sort of walk us all through so that the public understands the full analysis that went through, that you went through in coming to the hundred dollar figure.
Are the, um, is the Housing Authority Commission, uh, the Planning Commission and the Mobile Rental Review Commission generally meeting twice a month? They meet just once a month?
It varies depending on the commission. Some commissions meet bi-monthly, some meet as needed, some meet monthly.
I'm talking about those three in particular.
Uh, Michelle can answer that better than I can. It's right, I'm sorry. It is in your staff report, so. On page three, one more time?
About is actual meetings that are being held by the Planning Commission, the Housing Authority and the Mobile Rental Review Board.
Housing Authority is as needed. So, eh, for example, this evening, they were here for that action item. Mobile Rental Review Board is annually and Planning Commission is monthly.
Okay.
And they are meeting according to those schedules as, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Okay, so can we get, go, can you go through just sort of your analysis and, and the sort of comparison to other jurisdictions and what they offer in terms of compensation to commission member?
Sure, so we did compare, uh, six other cities, uh, in our region. We looked at Burbank, Cerritos, El Segundo, Glendale, Pasadena and Santa Clarita. Uh, Santa Clarita does have three boards and commissions and they do pay them a hundred and eighty-three dollars, uh, per meeting, with Planning Commission making a little bit more at two forty-five. Pasadena's, they have a mixed bag. They have thirty-two boards and commissions. However, they only pay their airport authority, their metropolitan water district board and their planning commission. Their planning commission is fifty dollars a month, their water district board is a thousand a month and their airport authority is two hundred per meeting and three hundred per chair. Uh, Glendale pays no stipends with the exception of their housing authority for fifty dollars a month. El Segundo has seven boards. They pay no stipends with the exception of their recreation parks and planning commission for fifty dollars a month. Cerritos has six boards. They pay a max of three hundred on only three of them. One is three hundred, one is a hundred and one is fifty. Uh, the other three are not paid. And then Burbank has twenty-two boards and commissions and they do not pay. And then Burbank has twenty-two boards and commissions and they do not pay any stipends. The the uh justification for the one hundred and one fifty, if you add those two together for a monthly meeting. Up to two meetings a month, you do have the capacity to, as a commissioner, to make two hundred and fifty if you would attend two meetings a month and you're the chair. That's how we got to the two fifty.
What is the length of most of these meetings? Like like I know the one we just had was fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes or so, uh I would say H RAC, Measuring V tends to go some length because that is a very hot topic. So those might go an hour or two hours. Uh Housing Authority is typically uh combined with City Council meeting. Uh and so you can, th- those are rev- relatively short. H RAC is probably about a half hour to an hour. Uh Planning Commission does do significant work, so those sometimes.
Prep time in that.
There is prep time for Planning Commission and they are compensated at this time.
Any comments, questions?
I I think you answered it already, but essentially uh if a committee meets twice in a month, they would be receiving two hundred dollars.
Yes, and if they're the chair, they would get an extra fifty.
An extra fifty, okay.
Okay, then uh to touch on a point that our city attorney um referenced in terms of an amendment, a proposed amendment to the draft language of this ordinance. Um I uh in speaking with staff, I asked that that be included uh into the draft language and and What that one sentence provides is is as uh Mr. Zink mentioned, you can donate uh any compensation received. But that still subjects you to, you still have to fill out all of the forms and and comply with all of our HR requirements. However, um the the language that I'm suggesting is uh providing commissioners or uh committee members The opportunity to waive the money, so that if they don't wanna deal with the 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 forms and have to go through a million trainings, they can just waive it. Um so I just wanna provide everybody the opportunity to to do, you know, to make their own decision. Uh whether they wanna waive it, whether they wanna donate, or whether they do in fact want to accept the funds. So that one uh revision to the draft language that the city attorney circulated to uh paragraph H. That's the justification, or at least my rationale for proposing that language.
I would also, I would also like to um make sure that when when we're requiring them to attend training That they're being compensated for their time during their training, please. They shouldn't have to do that on their own time and dime.
Alright, so with Councilwoman's uh Alarcon, Mr. City Attorney.
Would you, uh excuse me, would you suggest that we Call that training equivalent to a meeting, so we have a standard fee regardless, okay, thank you. That helps.
Mister Porter. Uh insofar as Ms. Alarcon's uh offering here, uh should there also be language stating that If they decline to receive the compensation, that that will then excuse them from having to comply with all the other requirements. Do we have to add that language in or not?
I I think that's implicit, um I think we can leave it as drafted, I think that's the purpose.
Okay, that's fine.
So ju- just in closing, I just wanna just echo everybody's comments. I think the the intent of um this ordinance and the intent of Councilmember Correio was was um well founded. I think everybody in this room understands the importance of public service. And that we should, we should compensate those who put themselves forward to to lead in that capacity. We appreciate all of those who step up uh and and we value everybody's contribution. So I think the intent is is clear, I think we're all in agreement, it's just a matter of how much. I'm I'm appreciative of Austin, uh Councilmember Bishop's uh initial suggestion uh at the September meeting. I wasn't a member at the time, I was sitting in the audience uh during that meeting, uh but I do recall that conversation. I appreciate that he asked staff to come, to do an analysis and come back with some some thoughtful um input in terms of What a a reasonable compensation rate would be, so I just wanna you sort of echo everybody's appreciation, or at least mine Uh for all of those who serve the city in the capacity uh as a commission member, committee member. Uh and in in this regard, we're we're taking a step forward, I you know, I we'd love to give everybody a lot more. Uh but I think at this juncture, I think what's being proposed uh is fair.
And and I I do like Jason's idea of a employee discount card for people that serve on our commissions and committees that They get into events or maybe a discount at the water park because they serve on a committee or a commission. I I think that that would be a nice perk for them, so if we could look into that, Mister City Attorney or City City Manager over there?
Yes, we can absolutely do that and bring a recommendation back to um to comply with the fee schedule and things of that nature, so no problem. They are all already invited to our um concerts and things like that that we have at Marie Curie, so just just as a matter of clarification.
Great, okay, any other comments on this item?
One more question, just so so Mister City Attorney, can you just explain one more time the the Not apply to the Mobile Home Park Rental Review Board until July one, why why?
Yes, so the Mobile Home Park Rent Rental Review Board meets uh once a year, I believe. And they've got a meeting that is scheduled for the end of February. This ordinance will come into effect just before that meeting. However, we already have a commissioner appointed to serve on that committee. And the concern is then we wouldn't have that person available to attend a meeting.
Understood, thank you for that point of clarification.
I have one last question. Do we have a cap on every single one, so the boards that meet as needed or other bro- boards don't decide to Call multiple meetings in a month trying to?
That's the way the ordinance is written, it's a max of two meetings per month.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, anybody else, comments?
So um for clarification, so we've got what the amendments that were proposed plus the mayor, I believe uh Would like to ensure that they would um receive payment of one hundred dollars per required training that they attend. And that that amount would not count against the prohibition of two hundred dollars per month.
Correct.
So moved.
Alright, all in favor?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we just, we got a motion and a second, so let's call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, the motion carries. And so now I guess uh staff recommendation intro- introduce adopt ordinance, is that correct? But do I need to read the whole thing?
Uh that action is taken, you can move on to the next one.
You can move on to the next one, alright, so now we're gonna go to number twelve, the workshop presentation. And I believe this is gonna be Community Compliance Manager Gallagher? Come on up. The floor is yours. There it is.
There we go. Okay, so good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. I am very excited tonight to share with you our Say It, Don't Spray It campaign. Um which intended through this PowerPoint presentation, I hope to capture Um to define the definition of graffiti throughout the city. Um capture how much graffiti we have throughout the city, where it's located, what our staff efforts are, what our tools for enforcement is. What our law enforcement agencies are doing, community engagement and how we can encompass community art as well. Um I am going to start with how we came up with Say It, Don't Spray It to begin with. Um staff actually, a few months ago, we sent out an email trying to say, hey, what is something we think our community would resonate with? Would capture their eye and kind of make them think twice. Staff did a bunch of voting back and forth and this is what we ended up with, our Say It, Don't Spray It. So what is graffiti? Uh graffiti is a crime, it's an act of vandalism that can be unsightly, offensive, makes people feel unsafe And has a widespread negative impact. Our Palmdale Municipal Code defines graffiti as more than just what we traditionally expect graffiti to be, spray paint on a wall. It's actually bumper stickers, um it could be a Sharpie, marker, paint, chalk, etching solutions. Anything that's at least one inch um in size by width. It can be applied to a shrub, a vehicle, a curb, a sidewalk, a trash can, light pole, etc. It is a misdemeanor for any person to apply graffiti to any structure, tree, shove, curb or vehicle like I described. We have several different types of graffiti. We have hate crimes, gang graffiti, satanic graffiti, street graffiti, um and generic graffiti Um throughout the city, so we can see all of these are obviously self-explanatory. But we can see graffiti as even celebrations of anniversaries or birthdays or graduations, um items that are left up for long periods of time. Who is responsible for abating graffiti throughout the city? So we have our residents, we rely on our residents and we need their support to report graffiti in a timely manner. We have law enforcement, who is obviously um responsible for identifying those committing the vandalism. Our local government, that would be us, and we need to ensure that we have the equipment and the staff in place to both be reactive and proactive. Um we rely heavily on volunteers um who play different roles. It could be coordinated efforts, education, outreach and our business owners. We need our business owners to work together with their neighboring partners. Um and ensure that they have teams in place to remove the graffiti in a timely manner. Okay, to report graffiti, we've got lots of different plu- different actions to take depending on When the graffiti is applied and how to respond appropriately. So if you see someone committing graffiti while you're driving down the street, we want you to call nine one one. The captain has identified that as a crime that they would like to respond to in real time now in progress. What we don't want you to do is engage, do not confront them, do not pull over, do not try to call them out for what they're doing. A lot of times, people committing graffiti are criminals and may have, well, obviously they are criminals, but may have weapons And other things that we want to avoid you getting harmed. Um so we want you to be a good witness, we want you to take as much information as you can. Take pictures, license plate numbers, videos if you can from a safe distance. If you see graffiti, report the graffiti. Most graffiti, not all graffiti, happens at night. Um what is a complete waste of time for the vandal is if the next morning, when you wake up, the graffiti is gone. That is obviously not a good canvas, not a good area to come back and repeat graffiti. So the quicker it goes up and comes down, the less likely it is that your property will continue to be vandalized. We've got lots of options on how to report graffiti through the City of Palmdale, through the Sheriff's Department. We have Crime Stoppers, you can report it anonymously and not. Victims of graffiti. Um grip, victims of graffiti per municipal code, if your property is vandalized, we require you to remove it within seventy-two hours. We also understand you are exactly that, a victim of graffiti and the city wants to help you get that graffiti down. We have a few options in place. We give a twenty-five dollars Dan Edwards gift card, so you can go obtain a gallon of paint to remove it. We give paint pans, we give rollers to help that impact not be as painful. Um we encourage that you have a report taken every time the graffiti goes up. Our graffiti detectives do not have the ability to investigate where we have high areas of graffiti. Repeat graffiti, recreate, repeat offenders in a certain area so that they can investigate it And assign their resources accordingly. Our citizen complaints regarding graffiti are up significantly. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, they are up two hundred and one percent. So in twenty twenty-one, code, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, code enforcement officers received over eight hundred and fifty complaints And that's on private property. Um Public Works responds to the graffiti complaints on the public property, which as you can see, their work orders are up significantly, significantly. At the end of twenty twenty-two, our Public Works Division removed two hundred and eighty-two thousand square feet of graffiti. Which is an average of twenty-three thousand five hundred a month, which equates to five football fields. So that is a significant amount of graffiti that our Public Works team is responding to. Where is the graffiti? All of the districts unfortunately are equally impacted, it is across the City of Tom Palmdale. All of those little red dots indicate a report of graffiti. So what is the City of Palmdale doing to abate the graffiti? One of our most important tools for our success is our municipal code and our ordinances That allow us the opportunity to set some requirements. The first one, um regulation of sales and aerosol paint containers. So what that is, is it requires any of our merchants who sell spray paint to have their cages locked and secured And only sold to individuals eighteen or over with ID. So one of the things our code enforcement team does is they do weekly inspections at the retailers to ensure their cages are closed and locked. If they're not, we give them a informational flyer telling them why it's important, reminding them of their obligation and a warning. If we continue to go back, we can then in um issue administrative citations. Um we have obviously the regulation, the possession of graffiti implements. So if little Jimmy is walking home from school with a backpack full of Sharpies and markings on there, um spiral notepads and things like that. We have a a um an ordinance in place to address that. If you are caught applying the graffiti, our fine amount for that starts at two thousand five hundred dollars for the first offense. Five thousand for the second and ten thousand for the third. If you are minor, these fees are also, you can hold the parents responsible for that as well. Some of that is what we touched on at the last council meeting with that ordinance. Um we have the ability for civil um reimbursement. And um we, our last ordinance there is which requires the private property owners to remove the graffiti within seventy-two hours. That is a painful citation to issue, however, it is important that they are responsive and remove it in a timely manner. Graffiti Tracker, so the City of Palmdale invested in a software program called Graffiti Tracker. Public Works and our community compliance teams, every time they respond to graffiti, they take a picture of this Which is uploaded into Graffiti Tracker. Graffiti Tracker is a software program that law enforcement agencies use across the country. So you, if and when someone is caught doing the graffiti, the detectives handling the case are able to Link all like graffiti, so maybe they get arrested in New York, but they're able to identify all of their incidents here in Palmdale as well And link them together and then hopefully there's a restitution component for the victims of graffiti along the way. Trees are trimmed throughout our parks and around our lighting to make it a less likely safe space to create the graffiti. Um we have, we have dedicated staff from every department within the city. And right now they meet monthly and we are constantly strategizing on what we can do better, what we can do more and how we can address these. We have our Public Works Department, Community Compliance, Communications, our graffiti detective, our community programs, Public Art Manager. Everybody is in this room trying to strategize together, we actually meet tomorrow morning Um on what we can do different, what the trends are and how to best be responsive. Staff conducts daily inspections, that can be through our PSO programs and our Public Works programs, at our parks, at our city facilities, the quicker we can get it. See it, observe it, we can report it and have it taken down. The city is also in the process of upgrading and installing cameras citywide. We're expected to have this project completed by the end of twenty twenty-three. Our community programs coordinator is building engagement through our season of service and volunteer outreach with our youth programs. We have Business Watch and Neighborhood Watch where we encourage our neighbors and neighboring businesses to work together to report, identify And get it removed as quickly as possible. And we have our partnership with our local utility companies. So utility co- utility boxes across the city seem to be an easy target. And one of the things we did over the last twelve months that we're very proud of is we reached out to each, we have thirteen utility companies in the City of Palmdale. And we reached out to each of them, we brought them in and we had a conversation. What are you doing to proactively um prevent these and what is your plan in place to remove them? We have great direct connects now, when we see it, we know exactly who to shoot the email to. They have been very responsive in getting them down within the seventy-two hour window, they send us a picture back, let us know it's done and We can close our case and we can focus on our other properties. We have outreach in all different um forums here. We have our Palmdale Connection, we have our digital billboards, Season of Service, press releases, social media, city website. We're on the side of ABT eight buses, flyers, school distribution, Spanish radios, there's not a single event you're gonna go to in the City of Palmdale Without seeing our Say It, Don't Spray It flyer, trying to encourage um the awareness. What is our Measure AV has done so far, some of the funding towards these efforts is we have purchased two graffiti What is our Measure A V has done so far, some of the funding towards these efforts is we have purchased two graffiti removal trucks. They are expected to, we're expected to have receipt of them at the end of March, that should help our Public Works team. Be significantly more effective and what they're using with their current equipment. Um, our traffic signal control boxes. So the city of Palmdale has a hundred and three traffic signal control boxes that we are very close to wrapping. With um some art pieces and they're not community art, but they are art. And we are looking for and trying to finalize the right look for those. Um, that will deter and hide and easily claim graffiti if you will, so it'll bring us a nice balance there. Um, we also have our. Um, it also funds our supplies for our volunteer removal dates, which I'm going to get into that as well. On the second and fourth Thursday of every month, city staff has been given the option to come out from behind their desks. And remove graffiti, we do that on the second and fourth Thursday of the month. And these are our bright colored shirts that we give staff to wear so that they can be highly visible. And put them in a safe position not to be confused with those applying the graffiti. Um, they are each given a say it don't spray graffiti removal bag. In the bag, I won't go through all the items, but what are most important are these handy dandy little wipes that are very efficient. In removing from smooth surfaces, so what are we have, December was the first month that we started these efforts. We did two days in December, we removed one thousand six hundred and fifty four individual tags throughout the city. Some of those are in parks, some of those are neighborhoods and what we're capturing there is we're not painting over the walls, we're not doing the pressure washing. We're grabbing the little tags that often get ignored or unnoticed. While Public Works is focusing on the larger areas, we're able to wipe these things off. It's been very successful and staff has been very proud of their efforts in being out and being able to make a difference. Our Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, which we have our graffiti tech detective here tonight and our sheriff's captain. Who will be able to elaborate a little more on their efforts, but the city is very proud of the partnership there as well. We have our Partners Against Crime Team that we work closely with who also works. In cooperation with our operations, Operation Safe Street Team, which is our gang unit. Because obviously we've got a nexus there with the gangs and trying to connect with the youth and the enforcement and how the two are related to each other. This is one of my favorite stories, so we have a local artist by the name of Christopher Minsel, we're back in July of twenty twenty two. He took this initiative on himself and he. Located an area or identified an area that has been tagged multiple times, as you can see that is a very large building and it's been an open canvas for several years. And he um selected those lizards, they mirror their family pets. And he went out and used a hundred plus gallons of recyclable paint. He took this on himself and saw this as an opportunity to apply art and help a business in need. Um, the local neighbors and residents were very appreciative of this, some of them gave him donations, brought drinks and snacks and items like that to help with this cause. He intends to complete five more of these over the next year. So that is my presentation, we have, like I said, we have our Public Works team here, we have our Sheriff's Department team, our captain and our graffiti detective. To answer any questions you may have.
First, I'd like to know if the Sheriff's Department wants to make a presentation or speak or would you like to come on up? It's totally up to you, I'm not, I'm not, not forcing you guys to, but I wanna give you the opportunity to speak if you're, if you wanna do that.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening, Ron Schaefer, Captain of Palmdale Sheriff's Station, I'm delighted to bring up Detective George Hanley, a friend and colleague. Who handles the graffiti at Palmdale Station. When this campaign kicked off, it was presented here by Sarah Gallagher. And to see the showing of city employees that were here that have a vested interest in the community uh was heartwarming. Uh, they do take ownership of the city, you can be proud of the staff that you have and the work that they do uh to combat this graffiti problem. As she mentioned about being a good witness, it's crucial because our deputies, we have our park deputies. Who go out and they're patrolling and they find people who are, who are doing vandalism, uh they've engaged them and they found firearms on them. So they are criminals and they are dangerous, we want you to be a good witness. Uh, but we do need it reported so that we can track it and apprehend those individuals.
Um, so basically besides investigating it, um, prior to becoming the graffiti detective, I was on the PAC team for three years. And things that we do are like saturation patrols, we identify areas where graffiti is more prevalent than other areas. We try to saturate that area and try to catch people in the act. Uh, the picture up there with the, us on the bicycles, like we go on bicycles in the um parks. And patrol and people, even though we're in uniform, we're on bicycles, people aren't used to seeing that. So we can sneak up on them and I mean, we can ride in the bu- in the park on bicycles. And catch people doing it and they don't see us until we detain them basically. So, uh, we plan to keep doing things like that and hopefully put a dent in it. But I understand that's really crazy right now and. Do what we can, try to prevent it and catch people that are doing it.
So a lot of times people will complain about prosecution, uh, we do uh engage in youth diversion, there is a big effort. And in catching those individuals that this, they made a silly mistake, we wanna divert them. Versus giving them a criminal record, for those who are chronic offenders, uh, that's where George comes in and presents a good case to the DA and we do get prosecution out of that. And then administrative site uh feature through the city is also a very effective resource to uh deterring this kind of behavior. So uh we keep moving forward, but any questions for us?
Is the Sheriff's Department or the city doing outreach to the schools, starting from elementary school on up to, to let them know that? Hey, you know, we could actually find your parents and then you're really gonna get grounded, you know, some people are more afraid of their parents than they are the police, so.
We're, we're leveraging multiple angles uh through that, through our gang detectives, obviously they're putting the messaging out. A lot of the graffiti that you see is advertising, they're, they're marking territory, they're, they're recruiting. Um, so we're putting messaging out that way and then our school resource deputies are also very proactive about mentoring the youth.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I don't have any specific questions of, of the sheriffs, but I do just want, I mean, there was reference to various people who are contributing to this entire effort. If you're in this room and you are part of this effort, if you could just stand so we could acknowledge each and every one of you for what you're doing, you got you, come on. Come on, and if you volunteer as city staff, if you're part of the say it don't spray it. You know, I think it's important that we acknowledge all of those that, that are contributing to this and, and we wanna thank, you know, Sarah for convening sort of. And, and creating a comprehensive approach to this because it is one of the biggest issues that our community is facing, I think every time we have a meeting. We hear it over and over again, I think each one of the members receives email after email on a very regular basis about graffiti. Um, so it is really heartwarming to see that it's a collective effort uh by so many people, so thank. You to each of you for, for what you guys are doing, I do have a question for um for Sarah, you mentioned um the, the, thank you. You mentioned that um that on our traffic signal control boxes that we are internally working on um incorporating some art component to that. I know that in other jurisdictions, um, they, they do the same, um, it, are we asking or have we entertained the conversation with our thirteen utility companies? To see if they can implement an art component uh to their boxes, because it is like you said, a deterrent, if, if they create sort of a community art piece around the box. It's less likely that it will be, it will be tagged.
Yes, so during our graffiti meetings, that was internally, one of the things we were discussing is, hey, these utility companies, you know, really should engage in art. And we're like, hold on a second, we have a hundred and three of our own and we haven't done it ourselves yet. So what we're intending to do is get these a hundred and three wrapped and set the example to be able to go back to the utility companies. And encourage like activities.
So I have a couple of um things I wanna say.
Yeah, of course.
Gra- graffiti really makes me angry, so I'm gonna try to be very calm. Um, the utility box um over there by. Stacey Avenue S. Hang on, Casa Verde, that area, you can't go down to Avenue S without seeing, it's, it's a very unique piece of art. And, and it does look more like art than graffiti and then the graffiti around it. It's been there for a very long time and it's probably because it belongs to a utility and we don't own it, we can't fix it if we don't own it, right? Do you happen to know who owns that box?
I don't know which box specifically you're referring to, I do know the arts that you're referring to because.
It looks like a, like a dragon or something or a bird, I don't know what it is honestly, so it's not that great a piece of art, cause I can't tell what it is.
Busy artist.
And they've been going around the city with the same.
Yes.
Artistic.
Yes.
Display.
I don't know exactly which one you're referring to, Bruce may have.
Yeah, it's right around Casa Verde on Avenue S on the north side. Do you remember where the car went through the chain link fence over there by the utility? Yeah, yeah, it's been down for like, I don't know.
Gas company.
Okay. Okay, the other thing is, I would love to talk to the muralists to um get together with seven eleven. Seven eleven is the biggest target in Palmdale, put a mural all, all around seven eleven.
So I would like to tell you we have a meeting scheduled with them next week to discuss that very item. I don't want to call them out specifically, but I will say it is a common practice.
Let's be honest, they are, they are huge target, they're, they're in, in an area that's dark, they're open twenty four hours, there's a lot of people coming and going. Maybe some enhanced security cameras, some sensor lighting, maybe a mural so they wouldn't tag it, but I think they probably would, but it's worth a try.
We do have a meeting with them and we do like to take the approach when we see um repeat activity at a certain location. Um, us sending continuous notices or continuous phone calls or maybe it's citations or paint cards. Um, it gets to the point where we bring them in, we sit down and we have a, how can we help you?
Yeah, they, they clearly need help and, and they really are being victimized every single day. Um, my other thing is, I, I appreciate you giving residents cards to help on private property to help pay for the paint, the rollers. But when you've got a handicapped person or an elderly person or people that just are not able to paint their own property. Do we have a, or can we get together a community group, like, like the graffiti angels that will go out, you call them up and you say, hey, we know we. We know you're sixty five, seventy five, eighty five and you can't paint your own stucco. But we have a team of volunteers who will come over and do that for you, is, is there like an on-call group that we could get together? Um, some people, seventy two hours, it's, it's impossibility, it really is, and I just wanna be. I, I, I don't wanna re-victimize people that are victims. So if we could, I don't know, Jason, maybe you can get together a community group that can go out and help these people, cause they really are victims. Um, and maybe the city can, can help pay for the paint if we can get volunteers to go out there. Cause that's, that's what stays graffiti the longest is the private property and, and you know what I'm talking about. Um, cause I, I bring it up to you guys all the time. Um, it's easy for us to send somebody out from Public Works to, to cover a city property, but, but people that own homes and. You know, a single mom with, you know, four kids or an elderly woman or handicapped man, you, 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 you can give them five weeks. They're still not able to do it, so we need, we need to get together like some graffiti angels and they go out there and really help them, so. If, if, if Jason or some community member can get together a group that would be, you know, on call and say, hey, you know, my house has been tagged, I need help. And, and they could go out and that way. I, I think it's kind of a win-win, people feel good when they're helping the community, they get to know their neighbors, they get to, to know their, their neighborhoods, it's, it's just an idea. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
And these are the things we are brainstorming and looking for those volunteer groups and will.
And, and you guys used to do, matter of fact, this is how I got into being a city councilperson. Um, I started out doing graffiti cleanup with my Girl Scout troop, when I ran a Girl Scout troop and uh. It kind of moved from what am I gonna do now for public service and then I saw the ad for city council and I did that. But I started out doing graffiti cleanup, so it's really near and dear to my heart, do we have the adopt a wall still or we don't? Cause we used to have adopt a wall and you guys would give us rollers and paint and literally every time they graffiti my neighborhood, I'm out there with a roller when I was still physically able to do that. Do we still have that program or we don't?
It is being revamped. I can say that, it's not dead, but it's not alive, it is being revamped, um, I do wanna point out that these, the shirts and the supplies and all the things we give. Um, to our volunteers, our staff volunteers, we also are giving those to the public and to the businesses, which I have to tell you has been received. Very well and taking reports for these as well, the city has invested in six community service officers for us. So a lot of times what we hear and no offense, Ron. Um, sometimes when, if they want to call and take a report, the response time on that type of an event may be. A little longer than what they want to endure, so with a community service officer, you can schedule an appointment. We will come to you, we will come at that time, we will go to your house, we will go to your business, you can do it through the internet and things like that. But we also provide them the T-shirts, we also provide the businesses and the residents, even though they may have a big tagging on their back block wall. That it doesn't apply to this incident, they may have the other small taggings on their windows and on their door handles. And they are very much appreciating the city's efforts to do more than just come say, get this off your building within the next seventy two hours or else.
And if you can make sure that the council each gets one of those bags.
I have a bag for all of you and I would love your size and color choices.
And the last thing I wanna bring up is, please, if you want, a, a lot of people don't wanna get involved, they can do the, the WeTip or Crime Stoppers. Okay, but it's not just to report graffiti, if you want to report a tag or, or a graffiti artist. Um, cause you don't have to just repeat the, uh, report the graffiti, report the person that's doing it and you can do it anonymously, you might know who's in your neighborhood. And you don't really know what to do with the information, make an anonymous call or send an anonymous email to, to Crime Stoppers or WeTip. And, and tell us, you know, who's doing it. And, and we'll take it from there, from, from law enforcement side, but um we, we welcome any information, you know, if you care about your community. You care about your neighborhood and you know who's doing this, please let us know, it's, it's a team effort.
But please, just to reiterate, please be careful, um, I, we think the sheriff sort of articulated, we want you to be a good witness, but we want you to be safe. We want you to survive as a witness, you do, do nobody any good if, if something tragic happens. So they mentioned some of, some of the vandals are, are armed, please do not approach these, you know, these.
Just do it anonymously on a WeTip.
Anonymously and again from a safe distance, please, we want your participation and we want this activity to be reported. But we want all of our residents and business owners to stay safe. Absolutely, and I will give um a lot of credit to our Sheriff's Department and I'm very thankful for how closely we do work together because a lot of business owners. Send us their videos, they send us, look who we got tagging on the side of our building or dumping and we're able to very quickly work with the PAC team. And have great results and then being able to put the connections together. Um, just last Monday, on one of the emails we received, a complaint about some graffiti on the sidewalk. It was very nice to be able to report back from the Sheriff's Department that that particular person, just last Monday, took a two-year deal in county jail. Who was arrested and they were able to pull all of these multiple artworks together and had a nice um outcome in court.
So I have one that I see repeatedly and the city has actually taken action to clear it. But then a few weeks later it gets hit again and that's the military store. Or the ex-military store at about thirteen fifty one or thereabouts, East Palmdale Boulevard. And uh, it just seems to be, here recently. The graffiti just seems to be growing day by day, it just keeps getting hit. Some of it is uh very apparently gang graffiti and then there's some other stuff mixed in it. What do we do about these repeat properties and that particular property, I, I imagine. There isn't a particular owner, it may be a trust, it may be in a probate or something. How do we deal with properties like that that are essentially closed? Um, and uh, and, and are constantly being hit, I know that we require the owners to repair them, but if the owner is absent. How do we deal with that?
So we make every effort and we pull title reports and we have access to that information to who the current owner is. And we always reach out to them and we want voluntary compliance, we want them to work with us. In the event that they don't, um, then code enforcement will go to the court, secure an abatement warrant, remove the graffiti. And then put a special assessment on that property to recover the cost, in some situations, that's often the action.
Can we please get somebody out there at that particular, that is a particularly horrendous uh example of graffiti.
Um, that property was actually posted two days ago by one of our officers and the notice was sent certified, so yes.
They just went by there today and it was worse than it was yesterday.
I saw it myself.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So again, thank you for that presentation, um, this wasn't the first time I've seen it.
Third.
Third time I've seen this, and so that first time, there was over a hundred staff members. This room was packed with staff wanting to step up and help and so thank them, thank the Public Works crew, everybody involved. It's tremendous to see, so in that, I did receive one of those bags with the shirts and the wipes and. One day I was driving home, the entrance to my neighborhood was tagged, so I pulled over, I got out. I tested the wipes. They work wonderfully. Um but I learned a lot of lessons. Wear that shirt because they will confuse you for someone tagging. They will approach you. A lot of people came to find out what I was doing, so I think we need to advertise that message. Do not approach taggers. Right? Um when they found out that I was just trying to remove and not contributing. Neighbors came back with supplies to help. So I, I think that was encouraging. Um they also knew because of our advertising that there is a number to report and there obviously have been lots of reports. But also they didn't know that we have gift cards for the paint. So I think we have to do better at. Not just advertising the number to report, but also what the other options are. Cause I think more people step up if they knew they could get the supplies. Um I had one question. Is there anything that we can do as a city to help seven eleven or the repeat? They are victims. It's unfortunate for them, but we also can't let it stay up. I think. One of the times I've heard this presentation, you mentioned that the longer it stays on a wall, the more valuable that real estate is to them. Because they get that advertising. So that's why when I saw it in my neighborhood, I was like, I, you know, I can't do the city, but I can do this and I want it down as fast as I can. Is there anything we can do to help?
Um I think again, it comes back to the education with them and that is why we have asked, we, we. I don't wanna target seven eleven because they are a victim and we have lots of like businesses. That one just happens to get a lot of attention with its location.
If they had cameras or something in that.
Cameras, extra lighting, security, um staff is walking from their car inside the building every day and um maybe increasing their maintenance efforts. And being a little more proactive and reactive. It's, it's the education with us. We're, we're giving them the supplies. We're giving them to, where it's at no cost to them to remove it. But it comes to. We can only warn them and issue citations so many times and we need them to be more reactive.
Counsel, if I may, uh just a couple of comments. We do have the opportunity to perhaps help private property owners a bit more than we have in the last few years. Uh there was um, there was a, an attitude adopted that we should not be going on private property at all and helping them because there's some liability and things like that. But there may be ways to mitigate that. We um, not to put more on the staff, this would have to come with, with some resources to help out private property. But we do know that um sometimes they just can't get it down. And so. We have the opportunity perhaps to create um through the city attorney's office. You know, some, some release of liability forms or something like that so that we can go on private property. Uh a couple of other things that I'd like to mention is that this is an evolving process. Every week or every month, the team is meeting and coming up with new ideas. In fact, I talked to Sarah today about. You know, maybe we need to do something like the old dare campaign in schools where kids sign a contract. I won't do this. It, it's really ceremonial, but maybe it helps drive it home. Um Bruce and his team. Um if I can put you on the spot for a moment, has implemented quite a few things in this very week. To help get a handle on this and I'd like him to share that information with you just very briefly. To show you the extra effort and resources we're putting towards this because we're all feeling it as well.
Mayor, counsel. It seems that graffiti really picked up during the uh holiday period, um especially with a lot of the uh appears to be gang graffiti. And what we started to do, uh we implemented this week, we've added additional staff onto the graffiti program. Um utilizing some of our street maintenance staff. We are looking at ways to uh for long-term uh cures also for this to help try to get out there and do more abatement. Uh with long-term without having to borrow from another department. Cause as soon as we borrow from one department, it creates a, a problem in the, in the department that we borrowed from. We've also, our park staff, which is a very limited staff to begin with, they have started taking on, taking care of the parks. Uh for saints in the morning. The, the parks get hit every single night. The bathrooms. Probably have three inches of paint on it inside the bathrooms. So with them being able to get inside the parks. That takes our graffiti techs out of the park and puts them in a right of way. So we're actually. Getting a little bit more done in the right of way. Um I was driving around last week when it, when it was raining and, and uh I was. Pretty disgusted with the amount of graffiti. And actually before Rhonda emailed me, I, I actually was starting on a plan to do this. But I was out driving yesterday and noticed all those streets I drove down that had graffiti. That graffiti was gone. There was additional graffiti, but the graffiti that I saw from the week before was mitigated. So. Uh you know, that, that's uh, the staff is out there busting their behinds every single day. They appreciate the additional staff to help them out. Uh and just, just. But, but to put it in perspective. Um as of nine AM this morning, from January one till nine AM this morning, we've received. Uh four hundred and six requests for graffiti removal. And we have, we have mitigated a, we have a hundred and three work orders, which is a work order, it could be multiple locations within the same area. But we have staff has answered a hundred and three locations basically. And seventeen thousand five hundred square feet. And that's twelve days of work time. We've also started uh adding staff on to do, do it on, on a little bit of overtime. Hitting it on Saturdays, there are days off on a Friday or a Monday. And you should start seeing a, a substantial amount of us getting out there a little bit faster. Because it did hit us really quick during the holidays between the furlough, people take a time off, it's short-staffed. But uh staff is very dedicated on getting this done and trying to keep on top foot the best we can.
Thank you so much for all of your efforts. Just a quick follow-up question. Um has the Measure AV graffiti abatement truck? It been helpful in any way?
Well, we haven't received it yet. I just.
It's coming.
I just got word today that it's thirty to forty days out. They're, they're saying it could be sooner, but it's actually being built as we speak. Um at the builder. So the cabin chassis is done and the actual graffiti uh equipment is being applied to the truck. Um this will help out tremendously because it'll actually free up the other trucks. So this additional staff will have an actual graffiti truck to work with. Uh our street maintenance truck that we usually do the markings in the streets with, we've actually equipped that to go out and do graffiti because. He doesn't do much painting in the winter time because the pavement's so cold. So we've actually equipped that truck, which is basically almost the same truck the graffiti truck is, just. His truck doesn't have a pressure washer, but he has paint pumps and it uh, I think that individual that was in that truck today, he probably hit twenty-four spots.
So, so Bruce and Sarah and Rhonda, maybe we need to have a conversation when we get close to budget time about enhancing staff or maybe creating a position. Like a graffiti specialist position that that they are dedicated to graffiti in our city. If you adhere to the broken windows theory like I do. It's important that we keep our city clean. Our image is what people see when they drive down our street and this is not the image of our city. That I want and I, and thank you for all that you do. Um but as, as, as a councilperson, I am not opposed to as, when the budget's, you know. Being reviewed, that we, we talk about creating a position just for graffiti. Just.
You, you'll, you'll see that come uh, come budget because I'm, I'm already working on my long-term plan.
Well, see, great, great, great place to lie.
Yeah.
I've grown up in this city and seeing it in the condition it is is, is very disheartening and heartbreaking.
I agree.
And I do not want my community that I grew up in to look like this either.
Thank you, yeah.
Majority of the staff that, that works for the city.
We applaud your efforts. We know it's a monumental task and we all know what happened during, during the holidays when. Everybody was home and had time on their hands and apparently they had spray paint, spray paint in their hands the entire time. So. Thank you for what you do. Thank you to all the staff, to everybody who has, has done what they've done um and to the sheriff's department. Uh it, it really is a, a community effort and a staff effort and a council effort. We are all in agreement that we need to fix this. So thank you so very much.
One thing to remember too, with all the rain we've received, we can't paint graffiti when it's raining. But thank you very much. I appreciate the support and, and my staff definitely appreciates the support. Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
Let's give them a hand. Okay, so now we are going to move on to twelve point two. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Let's go ahead and do a call for public comments on twelve point one, the Say It Don't Spray It campaign. Thank you, Jason.
Uh good job, Sarah, by the way. Uh is uh Paris's law firm uh campaign, is that considered graffiti? Just a joke.
Okay, that was funny. All right.
You know, this is about the city image. This is about home values. This is about property tax. The higher the property taxes, the more money the city gets. So this pays for itself. So don't ever think. That this isn't a good investment. This is because and you guys get money right back. Uh and also we could do youth programs on this too. Uh we need to adopt city colors. I've said this many times. Adopt city colors. Have an interactive map that says what color that is on that wall that a citizen can look at. Oh, it's light olive green. Boom. Oh, it's Palmdale brown. Boom. That way we can do it. And then we go to Donna Edwards Home Depot and Lowe's and say, we need these colors. Will you sell them? This could be a thing that goes nationally. This could be a thing that goes for the freeways, this idea. Nothing worse than graffiti covered up with paint and then you have squares and stuff, right? Gotta do it right. We need to add dead trees, brushes. For lease eyesores and broken down walls. Those are just as important as uh removing graffiti. Need to uh do, do more landscaping citywide. You look at the map, Avenue R eight. Very little landscaping and you look graffiti on that hole. This is, it's a major graffiti. Um row. Um we need an interactive uh map for residents to make comments about all these, just like we did with the transportation plan. And we should have with the general plan when we were doing it. That's a great thing, an interactive map. Need to have a Palmdale Pride Spring Cleaning Event to clean up neighborhoods and have the city sponsor it. District, uh you council members need to make a list. You need to reach out to your residents in your district and make a list. I've never seen one presented to the city manager from a city council member. Uh railroad uh publicly. Uh the railroad bridge at Four Points. You need to go to the railroad and say the city wants to adopt it. Put a digital sign. That way you can put messages, say, welcome to Palmdale. You could do a lot. Uh the lizard mural. I remember the guy was saying he had a hard time getting approval from the city. Hopefully that worked out. And uh to pay for the uh graffiti protection of it. Anytime if someone does a mural or does something, the city should volunteer to give them that. I love the idea of the gift card and the foot soldiers. And uh the state prison contract. Maybe we could do something with that too. And that's uh. That was it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else wanna make public comment on this item? Oh, we have one on the line. Okay.
Excuse me, I have had my hand raised around Zoom this whole time and you called, so she wants to check me for weapons, but I'd like to comment.
We can wait.
I see, go ahead.
Is that her?
Is that her? Oh.
Well, in the, while, while we await, I, I know it's um sort of public commentary.
Here she comes. Oh, she's there. Thank you. This is for item twelve point one. Thank you.
I still have the Zoom on. I can't turn it off just a minute. Anyway, don't start me yet. I need to adjust for my small height.
There you go.
I wish I could say small stature, but that's not true. Just small height. She said self-effacingly. Okay, I guess that's pretty good. I'm sorry, it's not. I'm trying to just, yeah, to turn off the Zoom meeting. I wanna leave the meeting. Well, that too, but. Sorry, so sorry. Technology. Well, I was gonna refer on it to a message I sent you, but I'll try to do it from memory. Okay. So Laurel Forest of Palmdale, um on June twelfth, I sent all the city council members and the city manager a proposal which. Was ancillary to this graffiti uh abatement and enforcement project. More from my experience, I sent it again today and it's part of your official record tonight. Cause the wonderful deputy city clerk uh put it in the official record and you have it. It's basically something that comes from my many years' experience in federal government and substance abuse prevention. And being a church youth group leader, taking the natural inclination of youth and those with extended youthful bad habits. Um to be iconoclastic and rebel against society in the way that I think graffiti is, in addition to their gang affiliations. Something that's unproductive and harmful to the rest of the community and instead try to channel it into productive cooperative efforts. Now, while I was um away and I had this on speaker in the backseat while I was driving, nothing illegal. Um I could hear people talking about part of the proposal I had made, which is to. Basically form coalition with a lot of the groups, find the gang leaders, find the teenage gamers who aren't really gangs yet. They're just trying to show their stuff. And try to bring them in. In the sixties, we called this co-opting. It wasn't a good thing, but I would call it that now and it's a good thing now. Try to gain their cooperation and participation and buy-in. It's called buy-in into the project of finding uh places like. It's funny because I mentioned in the proposal, you have the lizard mural on the Bridgestone Building on, on East Palmdale Boulevard that I pass every day. And then I saw it coincidentally in Ms. Gallagher's um presentation, had a picture of Mr. Mizral, the wonderful artist who's great. Just look at his face full of joy. And if he could be facilitate for that. I don't know if he did that with Bridgestone or he was hired by the city, but whatever it is, it's great. When I was a youth group leader in Episcopal churches, we had parts of the church, we would take whole walls and have the kids outline silhouette. Of them doing community service projects and then everybody else would paint the mural and those lasted decades. Shirley was in an Episcopal church, but it was a, a point of pride for everyone as they saw growing up and the younger kids came in and saw. Older kids, they knew, oh, that's Joan, that's Jane, and that's, you know, whatever. So um it would be great to do a mural project and I think also allow one little site. Maybe this would be too much of um. Um supporting the graffiti tendency, but maybe have one place that they could deface out of the way. Maybe near a skate park, maybe near where the kids congregate. That's men say, you can paint this wall, but nowhere else. And if we find you somewhere else, it's gonna be heavy enforcement. But in the meantime, create beautiful murals. And the other suggestion was let Palmdale be known as an art mecca. And that's in the proposal. Show that people wanna come here as tourists and see a hundred gorgeous murals of every culture and every imagination. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this item?
No more at this time.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to close public comments on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, now we're moving on to item twelve point two, Economic Development Update. Two thousand twenty-two contributions impactful to our community and a look forward at two thousand twenty-three. Staff reference is going to be analyst Schuler. Hello.
Hello. All right. All right, good evening, mayor and council. I'm Micah Schuler, Senior Economic Development Management Analyst, and I will be presenting an economic development update tonight. I'll be touching on a few of the two thousand twenty-two contributions that made a big impact to our community and what we have to look forward to for two thousand twenty-three. Before I dive into that, I'd like to quickly provide an overview of what our division's focus includes. Job creation, business expansion, helping small businesses, attracting tourism through our visit Palmdale. And supporting and promoting film opportunities. Although my team is small, we work closely with our entire department, which includes building and, or built, excuse me, planning and building and safety. Providing the expertise that is essential to our development projects. In addition, we have great working relationships with other departments, including Public Works and the Engineering Division. To help bring our development projects to life. Our team has also built great relationships and partnerships with our local chambers of commerce. As well as regional and state organizations and consultants to support our mission to bring high quality jobs and investment to Palmdale. Palmdale's business-friendly environment. Palmdale's business-friendly environment is attractive to a diverse range of industries from aerospace and defense to healthcare and filming. As you're aware, Palmdale was named LA County's most business-friendly city last year by the LA EDC. What was so unique about being awarded this honor at this time was that it was during the height of the pandemic. Businesses everywhere were struggling and this is the time we needed to be creative and innovative. Out of the eighty-eight cities in LA County, Palmdale rose above. And due to the leadership of the council, we were able to implement many programs that other cities replicated. Over this past year, the biggest economic impact to our city was the B twenty-one Raider Stealth Bomber Program. So let's take a look at this real quick.
An Air Force project long under wraps is a secret no more. In a display fit for Hollywood, the Pentagon showed off the new long-range B twenty-one Raider in Palmdale, California last night amid rising tensions with China, North Korea, and Russia.
The B twenty-one Raider is the first strategic bomber in more than three decades. It is a testament to America's enduring advantages in ingenuity and innovation.
The first flight test is expected next year.
North Rep has steadily built up its operations the last few years and they now employ approximately seven thousand people. With the B twenty-one transitioning from development into full-rate production, the Air Force requesting one hundred B twenty-ones at approximately seven hundred and fifty million apiece. We will continue to see increases in jobs here in Palmdale. Additionally, operations are forecast to continue to grow in the coming year, years at Palmdale's Air Force Plant Forty-two, now employing just over sixteen thousand people. Thanks not only to programs like the B twenty-one, but also other developmental aircrafts such as the Global Hawk, unmanned aircraft in its variant, the Triton, and the two X forty-seven prototypes. Additionally, Palmdale is where the maintenance and upgrades are made to the B two Spirit Stealth and home to production of the center fuselage for Lockheed Martin's F thirty-five Lightning II Stealth Fighter. Industrial is another industry making waves here in Palmdale. The city is currently entitling over ten million square feet of industrial space, which will create thousands of new jobs for our community. Leading the way is a new Fortune five hundred company, which will bring in over eight hundred jobs. And we are looking forward to revealing this company to the public in the next ninety days. The city is also working with experienced national developers such as IDS Real Estate, Covington Group, and Transwestern to bring state-of-the-art industrial buildings to Palmdale. In addition, there will be many more projects we look forward to announcing in the coming year. With all these new jobs, the demand for much-needed quality housing is also on the upswing. This is being met with several new single-family homes and multifamily unit projects. There are currently over six hundred apartments and townhomes and close to two thousand single-family homes in construction or starting construction before the end of the year, with thousands of more coming down the pipeline in the very near future. Additionally, our building and safety team is in the process of creating standard plans for ADUs to make it easier for applicants to submit for these type of projects. In the last few years, we've, uh, processed approximately a hundred and fifteen ADUs or JDUs. Currently under development is one of Palmdale's first market-rate multifamily housing projects in almost twenty years. Latiera, The Landing, will offer thirty-six townhomes, forty-two carriage units, two hundred and sixty-six apartments for a total of three hundred and forty-four units. It is also part of a new mixed-use land use designation that will allow us to provide opportunities for mixed residential and commercial development to promote walkability with a variety of goods and services for residents, employees, and visitors. To encourage this new growth, be more flexible and development-friendly, the city council approved in September the first comprehensive general plan update in over two decades. Thanks to the leadership of Megan Taggart and her planning team, this update will make it a lot easier for economic development to flourish here in Palmdale. As you're aware, Palmdale, E I, E, excuse me, the Palmdale EIFD was established in partnership with LA County at the end of two thousand twenty-one and created the largest EIFD in the state of California, consisting of more than twenty-three thousand acres. In two thousand twenty-two, the city and county began collecting the property tax increment for the district. The Palmdale EIFD will fund a variety of projects to help fulfill the economic goals for the city, the county, and the state, as well as support needed infrastructure to help accelerate the production of quality jobs and housing in the Antelope Valley. On the retail front, we've been very busy. Currently working with the Antelope Valley Mall to bring some exciting things to Palmdale. We can't announce yet, but we hope to see these deals finalized in two thousand twenty-three and bring an entire new feel to the Antelope Valley Mall. Palmdale's retail revitalization continues with over a hundred and forty new businesses opening in Palmdale in two thousand twenty-two, including Sprouts, Pure Eighty-Eight, Pilot, Flying J, and Dutch Bros. We will be excited to welcome Raising Cane's, Nothing Bunk Cakes, and many more businesses in the coming year as we anticipate continued interest in Palmdale's retail market. Last May, we attended the ICSC Marketplaces Industry Event and we talked with industry experts, several retailers, and national chains who are looking to come to Palmdale. We were able to make many connections and anticipate many new developments will be breaking ground in the coming year. One of the many exciting new developments is a retail commercial center at Avenue S and Fortieth Street East, where we have two highly sought-after national chains opening, the opening that many of our eastside residents have overwhelmingly requested. Additionally, the revitalization of the Old Bonds Building and the shopping center at Twenty-Fifth Street East in Palmdale Boulevard will be welcoming two new national brands. City staff continue to work with Palmdale Auto Mall to support city shop, cities shop Palmdale program. Additionally, partnering with the Auto Mall on the city's first public-private partnership of public art. Creation of a new public art sculpture revolution was installed at the Palmdale Auto Mall roundabout on December second. Our commitment to small business support and training continues. Under the council's leadership, we were able to provide funding to launch the Small Business Assistance Program in two thousand twenty-two, which included Palmdale's Business of the Week Free Marketing Program and the Digital Marketing and Accounting Bootcamp Programs in partnership with SBDC to offer free courses to support businesses' growth. On January ninth, phase two of the program was launched, which provides small business grants up to seven thousand dollars for those businesses that are still struggling from the negative impacts of the pandemic. The positive response from our small businesses has been overwhelming. Here are a few of our small business owners that have participated in one or more of our programs.
It's a fun place. I don't think there's anything like this in Palmdale, so I wanted to bring something to the Antelope Valley that people can have fun.
You know, thankful that the city of Palmdale is supporting our small businesses.
We've worked with the city and mainly trying to get our permits, trying to work with the city, trying to find out, hey, where can we set up our business? And the city was very helpful on that. In fact, they have like dedicated places where you can work with them. In the past, we have also during COVID, they were very helpful on getting us information. And we were able to keep our employees up to date and make sure that they were safe during that timeframe.
I think Palmdale is a great, um, area for small businesses because of how engaged and how committed they are to making sure that we're all feel welcome and that we all have the help that we need here in Palmdale.
To date, we've had twenty-five businesses nominated for Business of the Week and a hundred and fifteen participants in our Digital Marketing and Account, and Accounting Bootcamp Pro Courses. Visit Palmdale implemented last year continues to make progress working to promote tourism to our area and increase hotel stays. Visit Palmdale website and branding development are to be completed early this year. Last year, Visit Palmdale sponsored the two thousand twenty-two Aerospace Valley Airshow at Edwards Air Force Base, Summer Concert Series at Palmdale Amphitheater, and partnered with the AV Fair as well as AV Walls for installation of murals at four different locations in Palmdale. Plans are in process to bring some exciting new events to Palmdale that will, that as they will grow, will attract tourism to our area and lead to more overnight hotel stays. Visit Palmdale will be working closely with Destination Lancaster in the next year to do more regional marketing promotions for valley-wide tourism attractions. Construction is almost completed on the city's new six thousand square foot film stage, which will feature a large CYC wall with a green screen and will be available for hourly rentals. The stage will accommodate a variety of productions, including music videos, films, television, photo shoots, and much more. We are also working to implement a Palmdale Film Program. The state has extended many of its incentive programs and increased funding. In light of these recent pro-filming developments, Palmdale is aggressively working to further develop its reputation of, as a film-friendly city. Our plan will include incentives to attract certain-sized productions that would include crews staying in the city for multiple days, building on the existing program to bring an entire film ecosystem to Palmdale to assist in creating more jobs and filming opportunities. Staff have recently completed work and launched the filmpalmdale.com website and we anticipate adding new elements to the program over two thousand twenty-three. This presentation was just a snapshot of some of the things we do. If time allotted, I would give you the full photo album of all our efforts because, as you know, economic development plays an important role in the development of our community. And Palmdale is the hub of investment and growth. Our geography, qualified workforce, affordable living, access to education, amenities, and culture are all the key ingredients that make Palmdale the place to be. I would like to thank the council for all your direction and support as well as our other city departments we've worked closely with, such as Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Finance. We have gained a reputation among many nationwide developers for being pro-business, knowledgeable, and committed to streamlining projects. This is a direct reflection of all of you. So thank you for making my job that much easier. And I am excited for what is to come and working together. I know we can achieve sustainable economic growth and a positive development for our community. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, first, I wanna say thank you for that amazing presentation and I'd like to give you a round of applause to you and the economic development staff. That's an amazing presentation and great things that you're doing, so. Anybody wanna make comments? Oh, we have to wait. I gotta call for public comments first, right? All right. Um, I'm, I'm gonna let you sit down and I'm gonna open it up for public comments, but stay close. Okay. Okay.
Jason's Inc.
It's good, but it's not good enough. I'm not happy, uh, really happy with the Economic Development Department of Palmdale. I've seen other cities and I see how they work and how they do things and what they give support to small businesses and it exceeds Palmdale. Uh, let's talk about the spear over there at the Auto Mall. Beautiful, right? You go there at night, it's dark, it's dirt. Why wasn't colored concrete and LED lights shining on it or some landscaping? It's not good enough. Uh, what we need here, there's nothing about the seventy thousand commuters and how to get them off the road, is there? Nothing, no mention whatever. I've asked Rhonda Mike Beahan several times. We need a report on the seventy thousand commuters, the mental health of them, the suffering, and how they're not green. Uh, we need a state economic opportunity zone, just like they did Imperial Valley. Expand, uh, the federal one. We need a state and county and federal one. That would also expand the film zone to include all of Antelope Valley. So eh, any project in Antelope Valley gets tax credits from the state. Common sense. We need a strategy committee. We don't have that. We were supposed to have that and we never followed through. The IRS, IRS jobs are an opportunity. If Palmdale doesn't seize that, you're stupid. We need to redo the enhanced infrastructure finance district. It needs to be expanded, it needs to make sense. It was hastily done, just like the approval of the general plan. The new, we don't have a new, uh, our website. Look at our economic website. Does that really make you wanna invest in Palmdale? Is there any pizzazz to it or anything? Does it show you anything? It doesn't show you anything that we just saw tonight. I offered you guys thirty-two lots, paved road, all utilities to build houses right now for teachers, firemen, whatever you want. Nothing. Just let it sit. Uh, we need a tax audit. All these taxes, Measure J, we should have received, there's a hundred million dollar fund that we're paying taxes into. Our per capita share was one point seven million. Speedy was able to get a two hundred thousand dollar youth grant, but we left one point five million dollars on the table. That's not good, that's not good economic development. I'm not patting these people on the back. We need a point person. If I bring somebody here, who do I go to? Someone that wants to bring ten jobs, a thousand jobs, two thousand, who do you, who's the point person? There's nobody. Do you mercy, he hides on their table, collects his money you gave him. I got a guy from Switzerland who wants to do recycled plastic and, and use recycled plastic to build panels that can be used in it. Everything. Who do I go to? That could be thousands of jobs.
Sorry to be a downer.
Any other speakers on this item? Laurel Forest. It's nice though, right, that it goes up and down?
It is nice. Gives you all the rest too. Okay, thank you very much. Very impressive presentation and shows a command of high-tech and media. It's wonderful, wonderful presentation. I didn't see the videos on, when I saw it online, I'll have to make sure and look and see it and watch them. Um, aside from that, I do have a comment. You're gonna know if I give you alphabetics and I say ADU, you've heard this from me before, but you're gonna hear it again many times, as you know. Um, I'm very distressed as I put in the, the material that was given to you by the deputy city clerk and it's in your official package and unprinted on your desk by her, um, that this report under the housing, and I put the three examples in there from the report, doesn't even mention accessory dwelling units. According to this, the law, um, the US Census Bureau says that we have over thirty-five thousand, I think it's thirty-seven thousand five hundred, single-family homes and another nine thousand or so properties that are, um, devoted to multifamily. Each one of those is permitted to have an accessory dwelling unit and the single-family homes can have both accessory dwelling unit and a five hundred square foot junior. It's not even mentioned, um, in having a, this come right after the talk of the high-tech industry, the aerospace industry and the high-salary engineering and management jobs there. As nor is the fact that a lot of people who work in aerospace, and I know I've met a lot of them, who don't make a lot of money. They're in support positions, custodial positions, maintenance, beginning and beginning mechanical jobs where they're learning on the job, which some, some of the industry aerospace companies are wonderful to employ, start out people. There's no housing for them. One of the things that the ADUs would provide is a thousand to twelve hundred square feet apartments, which could be two, you can even fit three bedrooms nicely with a kitchen, living room, bathrooms. That's not even, even talked about. I think there's a bias that shows that they didn't even mention it at all when we could have. When we could have up to thirty-five thousand new rental units, if they promoted this, everybody should. But using these cities restrictive accessory dwelling unit law, which as you all know, because I've presented it to you ad infinitum, ad nauseam, at least five times in writing, excuse me, ma'am, would you pay attention and not be rude? Thank you.
Please make sure you address the chair. That would be me.
I'm sorry, would you please ask the city manager to stop the clock while I have to do this side issue and ask her to pay attention and not be chit-chatting and distracted and not listening?
Continue on, please.
Um, two years ago, I collected from all the, all these cities and counties in California, as well as our two adjacent cities, counties to, or cities to the north, all of the accessory dwelling unit plans that have been pre-approved by their very forward-thinking, progressive county and city governments by Orchechex, that they could just be used on the spot by just filling in their address, basically, by the homeowners. And I gave them to Mayor Huffbauer, and I sent it to all the city council. Zero response.
We'll, we'll give her a couple extra seconds.
Lightness of that. Um, so I think that, um, we should be, we should have been doing more then, and we should do more now. The people who were not able to make application for accessory dwelling units because of the restrictive law that Palmdale adopted April seventh, two thousand and twenty, under ordinance number five-one-five-three-nine, which was adjudged by the State of California Housing and Community Development Department by letter two, the city of Palmdale, to the planning manager, and at that time, even Megan Taggart was planning manager, doing the thirty-day period for compliance, which they ignored, and everyone has ignored ever since. I hear a lot of lip service now, again, tonight, and in the, the materials for Palmdale twenty forty-five. Oh, we may get to that. We may do that. We may, we may do that, but they're not doing it.
Go ahead, sorry.
Three years of non-compliance and restricting people is way too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item?
No more public comments on this item.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to close public comments.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, public comments is closed. Now...
Thanks again for your presentation.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much.
And for your entire team.
And I guess, anybody have any comments up here regarding the presentation? You know what I would like to ask is, and I'm not really sure who to ask, I would like to have the people from AV Edge come and do a presentation on what they've done to support the city of Palmdale, because honestly, I've heard nothing.
Actually, um, they are scheduled, I believe, for your next council meeting to come and provide you a presentation on everything that they're working on.
Oh, very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And then if I could just sort of request as an aside, maybe we can sit down separately and talk about it. I'd like to expand and learn more about this accounting bootcamp, and congratulations on, you said you had a hundred and fifteen small businesses who participated. That's a great number, but I know we've got a lot more out there. I'd be interested to know if we're doing outreach specific to, you know, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, if we offer those kinds of accounting bootcamp workshops in, in other languages and Spanish and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, definitely. Actually, um, everything was offered both in English and Spanish, and we did work closely with all our chambers to help advertise the program and promote it and get people in, uh, to take those courses.
Great, so I, whatever we need to do to continue to support the, the ongoing presentation of those kinds of workshops and outreach, I'm, I'm all in, so I'd be happy to work with you on that.
And I, I wanted to say, don't be afraid to really think crazy big. And, and so, because here's the crazy things that run through my mind. You know, it's, the possibilities are endless if you just, you know, if you just ask. It doesn't hurt to ask. So, I, I know you guys are watching the news, and you see there's a lot of problems with, with Mr. Musk and his Twitter, and he's having problems with San Francisco, and I'm thinking, Lord, we've got a lot of land. Build him a building here. Bring his headquarters here. We would welcome them, and we wouldn't care if they had it caught in their office. Um, there's no reason we can't have a West Coast Space Force headquarters. Uh, it doesn't hurt to ask, and if you think really big, maybe you think, people will think you're a little wacky, but you know what? It could win. It could win us some great jobs and great businesses, so. Never be afraid, we would support you. Never be afraid to think big.
Thank you very much, and yeah, we do do a lot of outreach. Um, GoBiz does send out, you know, RFIs for big companies that are looking for places to go. We've responded to several of those, um, over the last year and kind of waiting to see where we're at with those. But yeah, definitely, we would love to have, uh, some of those, uh, big job creators, and that way, we do get some of those commuters off the freeway.
And with, with all, with all the commuters that we have that are LA County workers, I would really like to have, have our fifth district supervisor consider putting a North County headquarters here where our county employees could work instead of commute. Um, they've never done that. We, we have one of the largest sheriff's departments in the world. We don't have a North County headquarters for that. We've got deputies going down the freeway to train when they could train up here if we had the facility. And so, I'm just saying, ask everybody that we can think of to bring their business here, build here, keep people off the fourteen freeway, not just for traffic, but for a safety issue. So, those are just some, some ideas.
Definitely, and those are great, yeah, those are great ideas, and we definitely have.
We have space.
Yeah, we do, and we definitely have a qualified workforce here that we want to capture, and we want to keep them here in Palmdale.
Anyone else?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, all of your teams. St. Garber, appreciate everything you guys are doing. Um, one thing that we used to do, uh, is that we, we'd have a float and the Rose Parade in the two thousand and one, two thousand and two, two thousand and three, uh, period. That's viewed worldwide, it's viewed, uh, in, in America and North America, and certainly in, in Southern California.
Yes.
I have said this before, and I want to repeat it tonight, that there is a flight of businesses from California. I don't care what anyone wants to deny in that respect, but it is, it is a fact of life. California is considered to be anti-business. Palmdale and Antelope Valley is pro-business. This council is pro-business. And, um, what I'm saying is, instead of allowing these companies to flee California, go to Arizona, Nevada, Texas, Idaho, and other states, why can't they come to Antelope Valley? Where's the outreach to try to stop the outflow from Los Angeles County instead of going to some other state? Let's get them to come here, at least some of them. And I know you're doing a great job, but perhaps something in that respect would be good. But otherwise, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Now, we are at item number thirteen, and this is public comments on non-agendized items. And remember that this is, um, subject matter that falls within the city council's jurisdictions, things that we can, um, that have, take action on or, or make changes for. It's gotta be city-business-related, so non-agendized items, any public comments?
Rob Duco, Public Affairs Manager, Southern California Gas.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Ben Court, council members. Uh, my name is Rob Duco. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company here in the Antelope Valley. I know the mayor and Councilman Loa, Councilmember Alakarn and Olson. Uh, welcome. I haven't had the opportunity to meet you yet, but I look forward to working with you. Um, I'm here tonight to inform you and your constituents and our customers that natural gas prices, uh, are higher, uh, really than they've ever been this January because of several factors. If you've gotten your, uh, SoCal gas bill, you know it. Um, if you haven't, hopefully, this'll, will be a, a warning to, to take the edge off a little. Um, customers this month will see a bill double or higher than one year ago for the same period. Uh, the high bills are a result of historically high gas, natural gas prices in the Western United States. Uh, SoCal Gas does not set the price for natural gas. We buy it on the regional and national markets and then sell it to our customers at the same price. We make our money by, uh, transporting the gas, delivering it to you. But, uh, and that part, that rate is set by the CPUC, but the price of gas is simply a pass-through for the price of the commodity, so we don't profit from that price when it goes up. Um, according to the U.S. Energy Administration, Energy Information Administration, there are a number of factors which are contributing to the higher natural gas commodity prices this year on the West Coast. First, widespread, uh, cold weather along the entire West Coast, high natural demand, high natural gas demand for heating by customers in these colder areas, reduced natural gas supplies coming from Canada and the Rocky Mountains, reduced interstate pipeline capacity from West Texas, uh, because of pipeline main, pipeline maintenance in that area, and low natural gas storage levels on the West Coast at the start of the heating season. There are several things that we are recommending to customers to help them through this period. Uh, we encourage them to lower their thermostat by three to five degrees if their health permits. Uh, installing caulking and weather stripping can help reduce, uh, both heating and cooling costs. Washing clothes in cold water can reduce your gas usage. Reducing the temperature on a water heater to a hundred-twenty degrees can reduce gas usage, and limiting the, the use of non-essential gas appliances, such as spas, pool heaters, and fireplaces can help that. Uh, we also offer several ways to help income-qualified customers through our bill assistance and forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance, and level-paid programs. In addition, we recently donated one million dollars to the Gas Assistance Fund, which helps in, in income-qualified customers to pay their natural gas bills. Um, our website has a lot of information on all of this SoCal debt, socalgas.com slash manage, hire bills, socalgas.com slash assistance, just socalgas.com for our website. And I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later if appropriate.
I just want to say thank you for coming. It was very brave. I'm sure you've gotten as many calls as we have. Um, I, I do tell you that when I opened my gas bill, I was shocked. Um, so it's like, bundle up, you know, keep everything turned off, and, and do, my question is, do we expect this to be a permanent increase, or is this a seasonal, temporary? Is this something we're gonna have to suffer through for eternity? What do you think?
I'm not an expert in this, but I, it seems to be more of a blip than a...
And I'm just gonna be point-blank. Is, is this a result of the Biden administration's protesting against natural gases? Does his policies impact what we're paying for our natural gas?
I have seen nothing to indicate that. The, the list of reasons I just rattled off to you.
That's about all we can do, but I, if, if I know where the, the problem is, you know, along the chain, and we can reach out as a council and say we, we would like to see changes, or we oppose, or whatever it takes to bring these prices down, we as a council are certainly willing to do that. So, if there's something we can do or letters we can write, please let us know.
The Energy, um, Energy Information Administration puts out a weekly update on, um, natural gas conditions across the United States. And it was in late December that, um, they noted the, the dramatic spike on the West Coast, and specifically west of the Rockies where, where this, this spike is. Um, so it's really a, a regional thing.
Okay, and, and does your programs include, um, assistance for the, the elderly?
Yes, or, it's, most of them are, are income-qualified rather than age-qualified.
Okay, great. All right, anybody have any questions for him? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other speakers on non-agendized items? Jason Zink.
Don't think the radical, uh, elite liberals don't, aren't making this happen, okay? They're making, they're trying to make gas go away and, and electric comes more and, uh, make it seem more cheaper for electric products, because you raise oil and gas, right? And then China sells more stuff to us. Uh, the Rose Parade idea, love it, love it, love it. We gotta do it. Come on, let's get going here.
I've downloaded all the information. It's on my computer, all the applications.
Um, Mayor, uh, Wilk Lackey in Carrillo, what have they done for us? Why haven't they proposed an Antelope Valley Economic Opportunity Zone? Pretty lazy, aren't they? And they're getting paid good money just to sit there in a seat. Trust me, they need, you guys need to put a foot in their rear. This is ridiculous what's going on. Seventy thousand people suffering every day, and they have done nothing. Uh, the milk, renaming Desert Sands Park after Martin Luther King. I'd like you guys to do that and build a regional center and use, uh, that, uh, to get us more corporate and government grants to support it. Uh, County Measure J, we left a lot of money on the table. Let's not have that happen again. It's gonna balloon to fifteen to twenty million for Palmdale. That's our per capita share, if we want it. That would pay for the regional center, wouldn't it? Per year. Uh, our senior citizens, have we done anything yet? Does Call Spectrum have outgiving our seniors free internet and basic cable? Every month goes by. Alakon, I contacted you. I, you haven't got a response from you about meeting with you. And other council members, I'd like to meet with you guys, drive you around your districts and show you what's needed. Little Rock Dam, it's been ten years since it's been closed. Palmdale Water District just doesn't want to open it, basically. That's not right. It's not right that I can't take my mother and her friend up there to go see the dam overflowing just because those guys don't want the public to have access to it. That's our national forest. AV has a higher homeless count than LA Skid Row. Have you ever heard about that? Why aren't you guys promoting that? To bring more funding to Antelope Valley. We do not promote this valley. This economic team over here has not promoted Antelope Valley. I asked for an office up in Silicon Valley for Antelope Valley to create relationships so they know there's a second part of California, Loa. They haven't done it. Neither has AV Edge. The catch basins are all full of dirt. Are we gonna apply for a free grant? Everyone's declared emergency except Palmdale. Free money, we're letting. The last thing I want to leave you guys with is we need a district map on this wall or this mall of your districts and the five of you on, on the board. Probably a digital screen, just like that would be good. That way, if we need, for other information, we could do that. But the public needs to know Palmdale has districts, okay? All right, good night.
Any other speakers on non-agendized items? Calling once, calling twice. Okay, I make a motion to close public comments on this item.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, moving on to item number fourteen, City Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Once again, I think that, um, we've flooded you with a lot of information this evening, so I don't necessarily have anything additional other than to comment that this Friday, we will have, uh, the Justice Sunday Encore Performance here at the Palmdale Playhouse, celebrating MLK Day and his impact. Uh, that engages a lot of local youth, and it's always a, a really great thing to be a part of. So, I know several council members intend, intend to be in attendance. So, um, but with that, I'd also like to, um, request from council any new agenda items that you may have as well.
So, I've got a couple things just to follow up on that. I will be at the, the justice, uh, event. I'm, as a civil rights attorney, uh, celebrating Martin Luther King is, is, um, an emotional moment, uh, for me, so I will definitely be there and support the youth that attend that event. But I do want to, um, reiterate publicly that we've got our Planning Commissioner application period is open, and those who are interested in serving as planning commissioners, uh, please submit your applications online. Applications will be, uh, accepted until six PM on Tuesday, January thirty-first of this month. So, please be sure to access our website for all of the application materials and information about, um, what responsibilities are expected, um, uh, to be fulfilled by our planning commissioners. So, I encourage, uh, all of our residents to, to look into that. I also, in terms of, um, coming back, items to come back, there were a lot of comments about, um, public art, uh, and our council's support of that. There was also reference to sort of lizard art, um, and the artist having to go through, navigate sort of the permitting process and, and some challenges faced there. If we could get sort of a report back on whether or not we can, um, enact a waiver for, um, any permitting fees for those who want to propose, who, who apply for permits to, um, to, to create some sort of public art as a graffiti abatement measure? Something, I don't know, you guys can be creative about how, how we figure that out or, or where we can incorporate that into our municipal code, but I think we, to the extent that we can encourage public art as a measure to abate graffiti, if we can waive, you know, some, some of those permit, uh, fees, I think that we should be, we should be supportive of that.
We do have a, a public arts commission that reviews all those, so maybe we can get with that and, and find out that the easiest streamlining process that we can do for that.
They'll be providing an update to you in the next ninety days about the public art plan, the five-year art plan, and we'll make sure to include that in the report out.
Uh, I have something that I would like to see come back for further discussion, and I think it kind of goes along with the theme of tonight. If we want to see more economic development, I think one of the first things we have to do is get this crime under control, reduce the graffiti. I would like to hear from the graffiti detective. I would like to hear from the graffiti detective once a month, but I think a more appropriate place might do that to, to maybe discuss forming a criminal justice committee or commission. I think, um, that could do wonders, that's where we could have these conversations like, what can we do to help Seven-Elevens or be defenders, get cameras, get those reports? Uh, I would like to see that for our city, so if we could bring that back, that'd be great.
So just if I can dovetail on that, when, um, I had the, we, Councilmember Loa and I had the opportunity to go up to the Contract Cities Association Sacramento Legislative Malfoe Conference last week. Um, but the, uh, ALAD's, uh, representatives in their panel, um, announced that the LA County has authorized nine new, um, academies for the hiring of sheriffs. And so if we can incorporate that in the report back in terms of what, what we can do on the public safety front, um, I'd like to see, you know, if we can get information on, you know, the timeline for those academies, how we can, um, uh, I don't know, create some sort of incentives for new deputies to, to come out to the AV. That would be great.
Rhonda, could we get an update on, um, major projects that have been percolating now for a couple of years? Um, some of them seem to be stalled, but, uh, we need to see what, what can be done going forward. The airport, Bright Line, High-Speed Rail, um, other projects that are coming in for industry, for business, uh, whatever it is that, uh, that's going on, so we can be updated on specific items. And, uh, there'll be a, a, an additional list that I'll provide to you. Okay?
Do, do, do you think we should post a list of what each council person has been asking for their districts? Uh, things like road repair, um, beautification, landscaping, marquees? I mean, we, you would not, I don't think the public, I think they would be surprised at how many things we're asking individually, each of us from our districts. Um, Jason, I, I know you don't know because we don't have a list publicly posted, but trust me that we do represent our districts and we're constantly asking for improvements and, and things in our district. Um, do, is it, is it wise to let the public know that we're asking for these things? Or do we not, not wanna get their hopes up?
I, I think it's important to be transparent with what we are going to be taking action on and I think that this is a conversation to have when we have the council session where we set goals for the next year to, two years to three years. I think that that is something that we should, um, discuss at that time and how we best represent it to the public.
Okay. Anything else? I'd like to say that, um, while we're going to adjourn the normal city council meeting, we do have to re, um, what's the word, reactivate or rejoin the closed session? Um, cause we did not finish closed session. We're trying to be very, um, considerate of the public when they come and no longer make you wait while we finish closed session. So it, it is, uh, my, my decision to always say that we will, from now on, um, be here at seven when we say the city council meeting starts and we will continue the closed session afterwards. So we're gonna go ahead and, and adjourn the, the city council meeting and we're gonna go re-join the closed session. So thank you all for coming and, yes, absolutely. And, and we'll report out when we finish with the closed session. Thank you all.
We should move to the third.